Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the side of the United States of America and to the Republic where we should stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion open the meeting, please?
So made.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Just so everybody knows, we are being live tonight on TV, so please act accordingly. Or don't act. All right, item number one, Chairman's comments, I've made them. Item number two, deliberations on the sign, special permit for minor site plan decision for 207 Page Street, applicant Milton Realt Properties Mass LLC, votes may be taken.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet, first one up, is the special permit, signed special permit and the minor modification. There was two conditions added. I don't know if I emailed them to you, no, I emailed you the minutes this morning. We neglected to realize that during the, when we were going, Craig and I were going through our notes, that I initially just had a condition regarding, very specific regarding the size of the sign and the height. And so if you look on the last page of your handout, catch basin CB4 shall be modified and replaced to provide a double catch basin, that was a condition that was discussed. And then there was about working with myself on the "Welcome to Stoughton" sign, to make sure that its height can be seen and whatnot. Sounds like that one, I'm working on about three projects with those signs. Thank you very much. So with that, Mr. Chairman, other than that...
I have one question. The, we talked about the sign being 400 square feet, but I thought on their plan it shows 600, and you referenced back to their plan, so I want to be sure that we're, did they revise something?
No, their, no, their plan shows, their plan shows the 10 by 40 sign.
Okay. I thought we were at a different sign. I thought we had, I thought we discussed it could go down to 400. Was that 600 originally, you thought?
No, they actually discussed going down one, he said he could go down to the nine by...
Yeah, the next increment down, they come in increments?
Right, it came in ten-foot increments, but I thought...
But you approved it at the...
At the total that they were looking for.
At the 400. Let me just double check, because I have the plan. Let's see. Yeah, this is the plan that they reference, that I'm referencing, Mr. Chairman. And right here, it does, it shows the 10 by 40.
Okay.
So, other than that, you know, you know, we've got the recommendation of approval, made findings and facts, and the three special conditions.
Can I have a motion from the board?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion, yes.
Yes.
Peter.
The question I have is on the sign, 100 feet high, that's from the base to the top of the sign, correct?
Yeah, as illustrated on the, on the drawing.
Right, but the base itself, is that going to be out of the ground so many feet, or is that going to be level with the ground?
It's measured from ground level.
Remember the, remember the base, they have to come down the hill. That's why they had to go up with the sign to get to where the other, the original proposed sign was?
Play it again.
The way they're measuring it is from, right from the ground level up, and this drawing is specifically referenced, so this is when we do our inspections, how we'll look at it.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
And I'll make Craig go up the pole with the 100-foot, and I'm going to say at the bottom, right, Craig?
I bet you Craig knows how to work a transit, I'll figure that out for you.
You have some instruments that can measure that.
Do you need a motion to approve? No, we had the motion approved, we seconded it to have a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
You have it, the sign at the end of the meeting?
Yes, sir. I'm voting no on that, though.
Oh, you are voting no?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
One vote no, four, four, four.
Okay.
Is that what, that's a, that was not unanimous. I'm sorry, I didn't...
No problem. I'm just opposed to those types of signs.
There was a reason we gave, we went with this one, and it had to do with roadway work and everything else, so there was a reason for it.
It was a mitigation, right.
Deliberations on, item number three on the agenda for tonight, deliberations on definitive subdivision decision for 56 Old Page Streets, assesses map 93, lot 87, and 156 Page Street assesses map lot 94, lot 50, applicant IV3, Stoughton Logistics Park LLC. Votes may be taken.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have a draft, findings and decisions dated October 26th. I'll just highlight, I worked with Craig, we removed, so you won't see a lot of the standard subdivision conditions regarding bonding and everything, because this isn't, you know, because the road is totally under site plan review and that procedure for approval. The one thing is, I will highlight the two special conditions. One is that they have to revise the plan based on our technical memo, and then the other thing is that the road shall remain private.
That's right.
Those were the, you know, two things, and obviously, you know, so those are the two special conditions, and then we've added some of the standard conditions, which are general about getting, you know, the CAD files and those sorts of things, and cleaning the catch basins. Some of it is repetitive, because we require the CAD files from, from site plan review, too. So some of it's repetitive, but a lot of the normal subdivision stuff regarding bonds and those sorts of things, we don't need to do. So, because it's just kind of, this one's outside, this is for the right-of-way.
Outside of the box, right.
It's basically a right-of-way.
Can I have a motion to approve?
So made.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
You mentioned the catch basins here to be cleaned at the end of the project, going forward, will they also maintain those catch basins as, coming years?
Yes, because it's privately, it's a private road and privately maintained. If we have issues with the drainage, we just will send the code enforcement officer out and let them know that they need to deal with that. And obviously, the catch basin cleaning, that actually, they're conditioned twice. They're conditioned on their site plan and they're conditioned here.
It's already been handled on the other section.
Yeah. It's conditioned twice, so it's basically private.
And I...
And it's part of their operation and maintenance plan that is required through site plan, not actually, rather ironic, through subdivision, but it is required through site plan. So they're held to an operation and maintenance plan about removing, you know, removing the street sweeping for sand and salt in their driveways, in their parking areas, that's more of the, it's a site plan issue.
Okay. The other question I have is, I noticed that my name is not on this document.
Oh. I will, before we leave tonight, I will revise, I will go downstairs and revise that.
And I don't have an issue with that, because I did abstain from that vote.
From this vote?
Yes.
Okay, well, I copied the last subdivision we did, so it was not an error, it was, that's a Scribner's error, because I used the last subdivision as the template.
Okay, but even if I abstain, do I...
He wouldn't be signing it.
I wouldn't be signing it anyways.
Okay, then, okay.
No harm, no foul.
Huh?
No harm, no foul.
Okay, the reason why it was not personal, it's I used, I used the last subdivision we did, and you weren't here.
That's okay.
So, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstained.
Okay, Bill?
Yes, sir.
Item number four, new public carering will be held in the petition of the applicant of Stoughton Recreation Apartment 15 Pleasant Street, Stoughton, Mass. 02072, represented by Matt Koshon, Recreation and Youth Services Director for the Site Plan Review, under section 10.6.2, for the proposed development of new multi-sport court to include basketball and street hockey at Halloran Park with associated drainage improvements. The project is located at Halloran Park on the southwest corner of Pearson Leach Street, assesses map 66, lots 27, 28, 29, and 30, and RU Residential Urban Zoning District. Matt, I'm sorry if I bastardized your last name.
No, you got it pretty, pretty well.
Thank you.
Matt Koshon, Recreation Director and Youth Services, thank you for having me here tonight. So this project started, Senator Walter Timmeltie got us some money for street hockey boards. We worked with the previous town manager along with the police department at looking at exact, at a court or a rink in a location. Some of the reasons why we chose Halloran, we already had the basketball court there. It's also in the center of town, close to where police and fire could get to. This same design was in another community, and we thought it would fit well at that space. We are not going to be putting any lights at this facility, so it'll be the same as the park, dawn till dusk. And we will look at putting a security camera as well for police. We are recommending for the surface a post-tensioned concrete. A lot of the towns are going this way, instead of asphalt, these surfaces, they're showing that they can last up to 25 years. It's also a very smooth surface, so for, you know, basketball, street hockey, whatever may go on, it's a lot better playing surface. And this, again, the designs here, it'll be wrapped with street hockey boards as like a fencing. For basketball, street hockey, the courts now, they're already used for basketball, there's fitness classes that go on there. It's already used as a multipurpose court, so this is really just expanding that, adding that second basketball court. And now we have the ability to do street hockey as well. So I know we get a lot of questions, how are you going to manage, you know, street hockey, street hockey, basketball? We do issue permits for the John Dennis Athletic Complex, Halloran Park, multitude of other recreation facilities in town, so we'll just continue with that permitting process. When we do do like, street hockey programs, it will mainly be permitted out through the Recreation Department. You know, programs last for like, an hour to hour and a half, max. If we do do like, a street hockey program, we'll have one court section off for a street hockey program, and the other section of the court will be available to the public. We do understand this is a public facility, and we don't want to be locking it up with permits. It will be open to the public, the vast majority of the time to use. That is all I have, and I know, I think Craig has something as well, I think he's online.
Good evening, everyone. Matt, thanks for giving the summary. You know, we've been working with the Rec Department throughout this process, we surveyed the area and developed the existing conditions plan, and then worked with Matt to, you know, place that design on the site. You know, we fit the multi-use courts in with the existing walkways network in that area, so it won't, you know, be a great impact on, on the way that the park functions today. The parking is there, the walkways are there. We pitched the, the design, so the, the site grades towards the south, towards the property line in the south. If you look on the, the presentation plan that's up on the screen, the storm water is, is outlined in, in red, so basically it flows overland into a, a vegetated swale on the surface. There's a catch basin in the, the upper corner as the inlet, which will fill the below-ground surface, below-ground infiltration basin, which will be comprised of a 24-inch perforated pipe surrounded by stone. When that system fills up, it will overflow into the existing drain network. So it's been designed to meet DEP Stormwater Management Regulations, as well as the Town of Stoughton's Stormwater Bylaw. And basically, that's it. It's a pretty simple site plan. Normally, I do a, a technical review letter for projects like this, but seeing as the engineering department was the designer, we felt like that was a little redundant.
You're not going to criticize yourself?
Yeah, I think it's the best plan ever, so...
I think we need a secondary engineering opinion on this, please.
I reviewed it for him. We had, we had a lot of discussion on drainage, and, and it works out well now.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions?
I have a quick one. On that, that line of drainage in the perforated pipe and stone and whatnot, is there going to be any trees planted along there?
So not along the edge there, Paul. There's a pretty thick vegetated buffer there now, so we're, we're pretty much just maintaining what's there. There's a, there's a chain-linked fence there now, but that will come down and be replaced with the, the hockey rink boards, and they have a fence on top of it, so it'll be virtually the same.
Okay, no, because I was just concerned about tree roots with that perforated pipe. I have a French drain at my house, and the trees got into it and plugged the whole thing up with their feeder roots.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
You mentioned the surface material is a concrete style, could you expand on that?
Sure.
Part of the detail sheet, I think it was, hold on, I'm just looking at...
Did you want me to talk about that, or Matt?
Craig, which, which, was it on the rendering, or is it on the, on the flats?
It's on the detail sheet, so it's a, it's a post-tensioned concrete surface. I've, I've never been involved with the construction of one, but we've learned about it through this process, and will obviously, when we go out to bid, require that the contractor has experience in constructing the surface. But, you know, basically, it's, it's a formed concrete product with strands that run through the center of it. They'll pour the concrete around it, and then they, they post-tension it, so they'll pull it tight and then let it cure, and that gives it strength and durability. And you can get a really smooth surface that won't crack for a long period of time, unlike asphalt, which will get a lot of settling. And even conventional concrete, you end up having to have construction joints, and end up having with, you know, heaving and cracking with conventional concrete. So this, this is a superior product over those two.
One last question regarding Craig, what's the reflectivity of this concrete?
Can you put it in?
Well, it's a light surface, so it's, it's not a dark surface like, like asphalt. It would be more reflective than normal asphalt.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead.
This, this park here, was that an article that was approved before town meeting, like, maybe two, three years ago?
Correct, spring of '22.
Okay, so, and then the, the other question I have is, as far as the park is, is, the signs can be posted, as far as the Recreation Department, a phone number to contact, if there's any conflict with scheduling?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely, we'll have signs up. We do at a lot of our facilities, on say, Recreation Department with our phone number on it, you'll see them around, around town.
I just see hockey players showing up, like basketball players, and then they're not going to flip a coin to figure who's going to win.
So it is a public facility, you know, we deal with those issues now, when we play pickleball out there, we have people trying to play basketball, you know, we, we just work with them, you know, hey, we're going to be here for another half hour, or hey, we'll move down and use the other side of the court. So now this is going to expand it, so maybe you might not run into those issues, but it's like our other facilities, it's, you know, first come, first served, open to the public.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else on the board?
I just had one, it's kind of a side note, behind the given school, there used to be an asphalt rink, is that still there?
It's still there, yep.
Is it used at all, or?
I'm not too sure. When we're out there, not many people are using it.
Okay.
But it's still there, yep.
Okay.
Anybody else? Any members of the general public? Yes, ma'am, come on up and state your, just come on up and state your name and your address, please.
Hi, Noreen Ruggiero. I actually live in the Walmart, Wal-Mart, Walnut Park condos, right near the school. And I just had a question about the permitting, if Stoughton residents would have any preference for the permitting? Or does that...
I don't, that's up to, I think he's going to answer that question.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Stoughton residents absolutely have preference over all the permitting that we do, absolutely.
Anybody else in the public have any questions? Come on up, sorry, yes, do you have your name and address, please?
I know Matt. Hi, Matt. My name is Randy Rhoda. My name is Randy Rhoda. I live...
Right, sir, what's your address?
Right on Pierce Street at 100.
Okay.
Right on the corner. There's only one person that lives closer to this facility than me. I have only been in Stoughton for three years, but in that time, I believe, because of the congregation of young men at night next to the basketball court, I've had two crimes on my house or lot. And that's a lot of crimes in three years. And I attribute it directly to the crowd that sort of associates with the basketball crowd. And they, they loiter at night, and it's a group of people, and it's, it's big. And it's not a particularly friendly group of young men. And I believe the basketball dimension of that park gives that crowd a place to be. And they're all, they're, they're all summer. So you can get other people to testify to this, it's not just my observations. So, two years ago, before my house, my house burned down, and it took two years to rebuild. Two years ago, before my house burned down, I had a young man who's about 25, trying to live in my shed. And it was a very weird situation. Basically, I had to evict him. And he wasn't happy with me about that. You know, it could have become violent, it didn't, but I had to evict him. And when he, I had put his stuff together in a bag, and he took his bag away out of my shed and sort of pushed me aside as he was getting out, and he walked directly over to where all his friends are, next to the basketball court, because it's a place where people just hang out. And you don't have to play basketball to hang out there. There's a, there's a nexus of people who are associated with that, because that's where they're, they're camping out. And I don't think they live there either. My house burned down two years ago. I had it boarded up, which you have to do. A few months after I had my house boarded up, it's a 1905 house, it was really, really nice, and the door, the front door was from 1905. Somebody kicked in my front door and shattered the pieces of the door into the dining room, and left the, the door open. Now, I found this, because I checked on the house every day, and I had it boarded up again with one-inch plywood, which cost me some money, within five hours. But it, it, this happens to other people, too, but I'm here to tell you about it. My, my neighbor who was around the corner in the red house, her name is Jackie, she observes the same sociology of people loitering in front of her house, just like I do. We're not making it up. And during the summertime, people, you know, these people drive cars, okay, they're not children, they're adults. They drive cars, and sometimes they turn on the headlights of their cars so that they can light up the basketball court, so they have like, more of a lit-up place to hang out. And so the, the language that occurs on the basketball court is foul. And, you know, so, you know, four-letter words all the time. Now, I'm in favor of the young women who take their baby carriages around the walking path, but they have to go past the basketball court, and they have to listen to that, and their four-year-olds have to listen to that. And they are afraid to complain to these people, because they're not nice people. I don't want that in my neighborhood, but it's there, it's well-established, okay, it's well-established. And so first of all, to double the number of basketball courts is insane. It's just nuts. It's a bad urban planning idea. I want the basketball courts gone, I'm fine with the hockey, okay, but the basketball just happens to be a network, a magnet of bad actors and bad behavior and bad language. So I would like to modify this plan. The hockey is fine. I'd rather not there be any basketball. Put basketball somewhere else where foul language is okay. But I don't want it in my neighborhood. So anyway, I mean, I could say more, but you get the point. I am a very angry person about this. And if that basketball court gets doubled, I'm going to be fighting this politically, because I'm going to mobilize my neighborhood. I surveyed my neighborhood, and the vote was sort of like 10 to 2 against.
All right, sir, I'm, here's, we're here as the planning board to review basically the plan.
Yeah.
The owners of the site is the Town of Stoughton.
Yeah.
And the town meeting did approve this plan as it is.
I get it.
The usage of the plan, whether it's basketball, baseball, hockey, whatever they've approved, we're not here to discuss that. I would like to, and I'm, I'm willing to hear you, and that's why I've given you your time to hear you, so that the board understands your concerns.
Yeah.
The problem is, you are, you're at a, as far as a safety item, the park is basically, planning-wise, is, is very well thought out, and it's a well-planned park.
Nice, nice design.
Nice design, it's a well-planned park. From a safety standpoint of view, this board can't go any further. What you're talking about now becomes a police matter and other, you know, the enforcement matter that this board doesn't have any really control over.
So you can't take four basketball courts down to two? You don't have that power?
Because the usage has already been approved by the town, is nothing we can't, we can't say to the town, you can't do that, because it's approved, it's zoned as a park area. We can't, we can't change that zoning. Basketball is allowed in a park area, so unless we're going to change the zoning, there's nothing we, as a board, can do about that. You could go before the Board of Selectmen and or town meeting and say, look, I don't want this particular item in this park, but the area was zoned for a park.
Okay, well, how about keeping it at two, which is what it is now, and not doubling it?
Again, this was done by the, by the annual town meeting, the Board of Selectmen and the annual town meeting.
Well, they decided on four basketball courts?
They decided on those basket, two basketball courts that are right there.
Huh?
The two that are right there.
There are only two basketball courts?
It's four baskets, but there's two basketball courts.
Well, not today.
There's only, there's one basketball court now.
Not today. There's one basketball court.
Right, but you said four basketball courts, right.
And there's a second one.
Yeah, you're, you're going to double it.
Yeah. And what, what the chairman is saying is, is that the use of recreation is allowed.
I get it.
So the planning board, under the zoning bylaw and under state law, cannot, they can regulate under site plan review. So they regulate the drainage, the sidewalks, the access, they do not regulate, and they cannot regulate the use. The planning board, under the law, could not say, and, and all five of them could say, you know what, we agree with you, and they could vote, oh, only one basketball, let me, let me finish. They could, they could vote, one basketball court. And then the Parks Department and the town could turn around and go to the land court and appeal this decision, and it would be upheld. Because, because you're talking about use, and there's, and their, their narrow scope is site plan review, so they can't deny it, and they couldn't, and they can't-
Well, who can design, downsize it, then?
The Board of Selectmen and Town Meeting.
Uh-huh.
Those are the two places.
They could say they're not going to, and they, and they only can do that via that they're not going to, that they don't want to fund it. And they've already, and Town Meeting's already spoken that they want to fund this.
Well, that doesn't make sense, all right? It doesn't make sense. That's sort of bureaucratic. And you've got one basketball court with hoops on both sides, you're talking about doubling it, so just leave it at one on both sides and just have that be hockey. What's the problem with that?
Sir, again, there may be no issue, and I may agree with you 100%, however, we can't, that particular piece of it, we can't change, because that's what was approved and funded by the town. If we were to say, shut it down, like you said, we could take it to land court, the town could turn around and defund it, then nothing would happen.
Well, I'm not asking it to be defunded, I'm just trying to modify it so it does less harm to the neighborhood.
I, I agree, I just don't know, I don't know where you were, or where the people were in the neighborhood when this was being gone through Town Meeting and being gone through the Board of Selectmen, because it was, at that point in time, it had to have been publicly notified, and it was put out to the town that this was happening. So, when that was all approved, I don't know where the people, whether you weren't living there at the time, or whether the people in the neighborhood didn't know about, I can't, I don't know that.
Yeah, it's just, it's a shame that you can't modify things as time goes on, when you get new information that there's a real crime problem in the neighborhood. And it comes from certain things, so if you modify those things, you lessen the problem. I mean, I'm not asking you to scrap the plan, just put less, don't put up the new hoops, just leave the old ones, you know? That, that's not a big deal, you know, that, that, that doesn't have to be bureaucratic.
Again, the size and the stuff, the way this, the shape, size, and the use of the site has already been approved.
Yeah, okay, well, that sounds very bureaucratic, and I'm not happy with that.
Sir, it may be, and unfortunately, he is right. And with, what we can do, what we can do as this board, I would say, you know, to me, you know, somebody brought this initially up to me, it's a skate park. I like, I like skating, I like hockey, I like to see that type of stuff, but people hate rollerblades, and they hate roller skating, and they don't want that in their neighborhood. So now you all of a sudden get rid of the roller skating park, and the next person down the road doesn't like hockey, and they don't want-
Oh, yeah.
No, I'm saying, the next person doesn't like soccer, basketball. This could go on forever.
I get it, but I'm talking about crime.
I understand, sir, but have you brought it to the police department? Have you been with the police department?
I have, I started talking with people in the police department.
Okay, those are the people that you really need to bring up, and you're going to get that, you're going to get the, onto the police department. We can't do anything about enforcement as far as-
Could they change your mind?
Could the police department change your mind? It's not going to make any difference. Like he said, the town right now has approved it. We have been, they've been approved by the town. The only thing we're here is to review the plan that the town's approved, the usage, and the money, and the funding, and what is being used for, it's already been approved by the town. If we said to the town, if the town came back and said, really, do you want to get technical with the law, if the town, somebody in town turned around, he turned around and said, I'm only going to put in two basketball courts. The town could then turn around and say, you're not using the funding properly, therefore, you are, you aren't properly being done, and then it becomes a legal matter as far as how he's using the money.
I believe you, I believe you. So I'm just unhappy with this, but yes, I believe you.
But that's what would happen, is he would get, he would get nicked, because he would be not using the funding that the town approved for him to use.
Yeah.
They could actually pull all his funding at that point.
Yeah, okay, well, you've, you've, you've heard one person speaking for the neighborhood now, there might be others.
Okay, and sir, I'm sorry, and the other thing too is, I just honestly, I've given you more than twice the amount of your time, because you had some good times, so-
Yeah, no, I understand.
Good thoughts, okay?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think he needs to work with the police department, they can work on the loitering laws. There's a lot of things that you can do from the police side, and, you know, I don't, and I, and I, well, not, not me, it's the police, it's the police department. And I would follow up with Matt, because, because you know him. Matt doesn't want that in his park either. He doesn't want, he doesn't want the loitering, I mean, we as department heads, and, and as, you know, and as residents, you know, they don't want that either. So I think work with Matt and the police department to look at what the loitering laws are, how, if it has to be signed, no loitering per code section, whatever. There's a lot of ways that you can accomplish what you want, just unfortunately, it is bureaucratic, the planning board cannot, they cannot, they cannot restrict the use that's already approved.
Thank you for your time, thank you, thank you for hearing me out.
Anybody else in the public would like to be heard? Yes, sir, come on up and state your name and address, please.
Bob Dexter, 42 Belcher Street, which is right around the corner from here. And again, my concern is similar to what Randy talked about. I think you mentioned cameras would be installed?
We're looking into security cameras for police, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, we'll look into security cameras as well. When we started this project, Brian Holmes, who's the deputy police chief, was on the subcommittee with me, and he initially recommended that. And that's one of the reasons why we chose the location, because it was so central to the police, where they could easily enforce anything like that.
Are they going to be installed, or you just used the expression, looked into?
We will install them once, once we get funding for them.
So that's separate from the rest of the program?
Correct.
So they probably won't be installed when this is finished, at that point?
I'm not sure, it depends on the funding. If we can get more funding for them, we certainly will, but we will definitely work as close as we can with the police department.
So what do you do, put that into your budget request for next year?
I'd have to talk to police and IT.
Okay, so that's not as definite as I would hope it would have been. And who would monitor, the police would monitor the cameras?
Correct, we already have cameras down there-
Yeah.
-that monitor the park, so the police have access to all that.
So those are working?
To my knowledge, yes, the police, police-
Good, I hope so. All right, I guess, I'm just concerned about whatever can be done to help the safety and security situation-
I, I agree.
...that's in concert with the plan that you have the authority-
No, and I agree, you guys have brought up, and safety is an important thing on what we're doing everywhere, but enforcement isn't, this board isn't part of enforcement.
Understood.
That's all, that's all I'm trying to say, is that-
Oh, I understand perfectly.
I fully understand, and that's why I've given everybody their time to talk about it, but the point is, we can't deal with enforcement. I have no way of, we have no way of enforcing that type of thing with what we're doing.
I guess I was really trying to get to the point of, if, if you put cameras in, you're supporting the enforcement of safety in the area. So that's, trying to come in the back door, I guess, with that, but I think it's important.
He said he will try to get it, it has to go through other channels, it's not that, if it's not in this funding, and this funding is now two years old, construction costs have gone to the roof since that point in time, so I'm sure that there's other issues he's going to be dealing with when he puts this thing out to bid.
Very good.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public would like to be heard? Thank you very much. Can I have a motion, please?
Close the public hearing?
So made. I'll second rather.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any other discussion on the matter?
Mr. Chairman, I have prepared a set of site plan approval findings and recommendations in your October 26, 2023, which was mailed out to you.
Mm-hmm.
And, Mr. Murphy, you are on the signature line, just to let you know. So I'm-
Thank you.
We have prepared that if, if you so choose to approve the project, subject to the findings and then conditions identified in the report.
Could I ask Matt one question?
Yeah, sure.
Matt, I see it's all fenced in, so is this going to be locked at night at a certain hour, so that people can't get into those courts?
It wouldn't be locked, no.
No.
Matt, just a question on the thing, when you say there's cameras in that park, are the cameras not near the basketball court right now, or do you know?
They oversee, like, part of the field mostly, the playground.
The playground, but not over towards the basketball courts?
No.
There's no, I, because I don't know what the cost, I mean, this cost of those cameras can be fairly expensive, it's nothing like you just throw into the budget. I'm just trying to get, how we could get that into restrictions, but, all right, go ahead.
The system that you have with the cameras, is that capable of adding on to the system?
I'm not sure, that's not my expertise, I'd have to talk to IT.
It may be worthwhile looking into, that's all.
Yeah, no, and that's what I was trying to get, is that the cost, to a new system, or to add on to that system could be very expensive as far as that, that kind of area they're trying to cover.
We'll see at Town Meeting.
And, the only other thing, condition I'd like to be able to put in, is that they, that he does put together a motion for Town Meeting, or some sort of way to be able to get cameras to that site, to at least request a Town Meeting, and make that part of our approval as far as site plan approval. Can we do that?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, so if we can add that line in there?
Let me ask you the question, if you add that to here, does that hold up his construction of the-
Well, I would write the condition, from what I hear, is, is that the applicant shall request capital outlay for, the applicant shall request cameras from, I can work on the condition.
From the Town, from Town Meeting, or through his budget, or however he wants to do it, he has to-
He can seek the funding.
He has to seek funding, that's it, he has to seek funding for the-
There's several ways that you can look at doing it. You know, it's, you know, it's whether it gets funded or not, who knows, but, you know?
No, I guess my point is, as long as he's seeking funding, or applies for funding through the town, it'd be part of the condition he's here.
Well, depending, depending on what it is, if it's under a certain threshold, he could put it as a capital outlay within his budget, whether it gets approved or not, that's ultimately Town Meeting and Select Board and Town Meeting. Or if it's over a certain amount, then it has to go in the capital outlay plan.
Right, I just don't want the project, project to be held up.
Okay.
No, as long as he's putting it together and requesting it as part, before he would get finalization of the project, that would have given him time to get the project going.
I understand you want a condition that doesn't require him to, it requires him to, it requires him to request-
Request funding.
Request funding for cameras.
Yes.
And I can put that in, and I can put that on the agenda for, for the ninth, for a final vote.
Okay.
So I'll do a final findings on that, and you can look at doing that, making your motion on the ninth.
Okay, very good. Beings been closed, thank you very much, we'll see you on the next one. Item number five, new public hearing will be held under petition of applicant Seventh Realty LLC, 400 Washington Street, Westwood, Mass. 02090, represented by Barry Cremmons Esquire, 909 Washington Street, Stoughton, Mass. 02072, for a site plan review under section 10.6.2, for the proposed development of 2,050 square feet of Dunkin' Donuts with drive-through, and 2,800 square feet of retail building and associated parking, landscaping and drainage improvements. Special permit waivers under section 6.1.7, 9 and 16, and 6.1.9, off-street parking and loaded requirements to allow parking within the front setback and within five feet of the property line, in section 6.4.6, 1 and 2, and 6.4.9, standards for landscaping for not providing foundation plantings or landscape islands within the parking area have been requested. The project is located at 120 Sharon Street, assesses map 3, lots 122 and 123, General Business Zoning District. Can the applicant and/or his representatives please come up?
These chairs get lower?
Yes.
Did you?
They're going to continue getting lower until you stop talking.
Maybe we'll raise the table to lower the chairs and-
Is that the Barry button?
Yeah.
Well, those comments weren't for the public record anyways. Good e-
Attorney Chair.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Barry R. Cremmons of 909 Washington Street in Stoughton, here on behalf of the applicant Seventh Realty LLC. Seventh Realty is represented by one of its principals, Michael Cavalo, who seated, seated, I'm sorry, in the first row behind me, seated to my immediate right at the table. You all know Ms. Nicole Langley from High Point Engineering. Nicole is our project engineer on this project. Real brief history and orientation, this project calls for the construction of two buildings, a Dunkin' Donuts with a drive-through, as well as a second, approximately 2,800-square-foot retail, but yet to be determined tenant slash use, also on the property, with a common entrance. The site is located on Sharon Street, which many people don't realize, as you go down Central Street towards Cobb's Corner, Central Street bears off to the left, and if you continue straight towards Cobb's Corner, that becomes Sharon Street. The site is immediately after the Citizens Bank on the left-hand side. The site, through the years, has housed a Friendly's Ice Cream, has housed a Kentucky Fried Chicken, Rich probably remembers some of the uses that I'm forgetting. But it's, it's been vacant and dormant for many years now, and our client has recently purchased the property, they own the property, so they are looking to develop it with the two buildings that I mentioned. We were already before the Zoning Board of Appeals in August, at which time we obtained a special permit for the drive-through facility for the Dunkin' Donuts, and so the second part of the application for the permitting for this project is the application to you folks for site plan approval. It includes an application for a special permit for certain waivers relative to parking and paving, as well as some waivers relative to landscaping, for reasons that Nicole will elaborate on momentarily. Some of those waivers are in flux. What I, what I mean by that simply is, as recently as this afternoon, the project team was meeting to review Mr. Horstfall's technical review memo, as well as some concerns that he had with the entrance in, in the drive-through, that once again Nicole will speak to. So, again, as late as this afternoon, we were reviewing and revising that plan to try to address the issues that Craig raised, while at the same time, meeting the operational needs for the client. Because of that, the plan is certainly going to change, so we will most likely not be in a position to close the public hearing this evening. However, we still wanted to go forward with our presentation tonight, so you could hear the plan for the site. We could try to address any questions that the board members may have, as well as addressing the issues that have been raised by Craig. So with that, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to pass the, pass the baton, if you will, to Nicole, and Nicole can talk about some of the site issues, including some of the changes that we were discussing this afternoon.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barry. Good evening. For the record, my name is Nicole Langley with High Point Engineering, and we are the site civil design for this project. What you see in front of you is the existing conditions of the property. The property consists of two separate parcels, and as you can see, there's the former pad site for the KFC on the west parcel, and the east parcel was a former parking lot. It's still a paved parking lot today, and the pad for the KFC still exists. What we're proposing to do, we submitted plans to you that showed a Dunkin' Donuts on the west parcel, and then, as Barry had mentioned, a future 2,800-square-foot plus-or-minus retail parcel on the east, a retail pad on the east parcel, excuse me. Some of the improvements associated with the project include updated stormwater management facilities, recharge of existing runoff, new utility services to be extended from Sharon Street, landscape improvement- to be extended from Sharon Street, landscape improvements, a new white vinyl fence around the perimeter of the property, and significant just reconfiguring of the site for a better mobility. I did have a call with Craig Horstfall from the engineering department last Thursday. Basically with the design you see there, Craig expressed concern about vehicles coming in and turning right into the drive-through lane with that entrance being so close to Sharon Street. I believe it was a little less than 20 feet. He felt that if there's a long line, that some of the vehicles may extend into Sharon Street and we wanted to avoid that. So I'm going to present to you kind of what we were working with today. This is a new color plan. So this plan takes into consideration the concerns of Mr. Roth and the engineering department from Mr. Horstfall and reconfigures this area by extending the curbing, proposed curbing along the curb cut to about 30 feet, which would allow three cars, give or take, to be on the property off the main street before actually turning into the drive-through lane. The drive-through lane would start off as 12 feet and then widen to allow a bypass lane for any vehicles that change their mind or want to escape the drive-through lane. We're still increasing open space area on the property and I'm not showing the landscape features here that you see in your plan because we wanted to review this new layout and once we're all in consider, you know, in agreement with what we feel is a good design, the landscape plan will be updated accordingly. We're still proposing to recharge both roofs. Each system will have its own stormwater management system that will act independently. Roof area and the pavement from this portion, the west parcel, will enter an underground infiltration system where it will receive pretreatment from a proprietary water quality unit before recharge. And then any overflow from the recharge will connect into the existing drainage system and tie into Sharon Street. The same with the Dunkin'. We're proposing to take the impervious area from the development of the Dunkin'. It'll go through a proprietary water quality unit before discharged to a subsurface infiltration system in this area and then tie back into the existing drainage system. I did bring the original grading plan, just to kind of give you an understanding, the drainage plan, sorry, well, this is the grading plan, to kind of give you an understanding of how the site grades will work and how everything is concentrated to these areas and then we'll tie back into the street. The fencing that I, that I had mentioned earlier will start at this corner of the parking lot. It'll make its way around the transformer pad and then tie into an existing retaining wall. There's an existing concrete retaining wall on site that's anywhere from eight to 10 feet high. If anyone knows this property or familiar with the area, there's residential parcels to the south, to the south of the property. The houses are up there. This is the zone line, actually, this line in red between the residential zone and the general business zone. This area is heavily wooded and its elevation is much higher than the site, so the retaining wall is there to kind of retain the undeveloped.
Is there God rail or fencing on top of that? I can't remember.
There's not. No.
Right, I know that.
Yeah, it's just the wall to retain the wooded area. You know, there's no development over there now, so we'll tie the fence into that wall. The wall will remain and then over here by the existing transformer pad, we'll put another fence here between our site and the Seasons Gas Station. We're proposing to retain the existing transformer pad for the Dunkin' Donuts. We're supplying two screen dumpster pads, one for each use, so they will be independent. There is a connection from the street, and you'll see there's a crosswalk in Sharon Street that connects it to the businesses across the street. We'll maintain that by relocating that connection onto the property for pedestrian access. The Dunkin' Donuts parcel will have an exterior patio. The new, I think what we showed you before, it was about 750 square feet based on this reconfiguration of the site. That'll be reduced to about 540 square feet, just enough to have a couple tables out there if people want to sit outside. So the site does qualify as a redevelopment. We are decreasing impervious cover with respect to what the KFC development provided. So based on that, we only have to meet the stormwater standards to the maximum extent practicable, but because of the way the site was configured, we're meeting most of the standards 100% anyway. So with respect to recharge and water quality, all those will be met 100%. There are two existing curb cuts on the property. We had a pre-application meeting with Mr. Kelly, and the members of the planning board, as well as the engineering department, and we discussed closing one of those curb cuts and having a shared access into the property. So that's what you see here. This curb cut here will be closed. It'll be replaced with a new section of concrete sidewalk and new vertical granite curb along the roadway. So as Barry mentioned, we're here before you for a special permit. So restaurants with the drive-through use is a, requires, I believe, a special permit. And then we have, are requesting relief from the interior landscaping within the parking lot, just because of the odd shape of the lot and the, you know, the narrowness of this section over here. We are proposing landscaping around, but the interior islands just aren't really feasible with this layout and trying to meet the zoning compliant parking requirements. So that's a quick overview of the project and what we've have advanced it to based on our discussions with Craig. So I'd be happy to take any questions.
The, as far as the special permits goes, just the interior, total interior landscaping? Is landscaping around the foundations also as part of the special permit?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so if, you know, there's that strip that's required around the foundation.
The other thing is, and I, because the plans changed, I don't know, are you showing bollards in front of that building where the, where the parking is going to be?
We have bollards that run here between the drive-through and the parking spaces.
Right, but nothing where the parking spaces, between the parking spaces in the building?
So there is a concrete wheel stop at the, so you will have a six-inch curb in front. We're proposing a monolithic sidewalk that'll have a six-inch reveal. It will be depressed here where you'll have your handicap accessible ramp. There will be wheel stops at those areas when you have less than six inches.
In previous buildings that we've had parking and that type, this type of thing coming up to the building, because there's a lot of the safety hazards that we all know about what's been going on, we've required bollards to be in, provided in front of those parking areas. So I think that's something we should look at. I'm not opposed to different styles, different types of bollards, but I just think from a safety standpoint, in the drive-through going into the front of the building, that it should have something there.
That's reasonable, yep. Thank you.
Is there anybody else on the board that has any questions?
Just one. Where would the orders be taken and where would they pick them up?
Okay, so you would enter here. This is that area that tells you the height limit. Over here is the order area. There'll be two windows. The first one is kind of generally located in this area and the second one is right here.
Okay, now, so there's a decent amount of room for backup of cars.
There is. So based on the original design, we had 11 vehicles that were allowed, that would be allowed to be in the queue, and this, I think, we're up to 15.
Okay.
You mentioned that the new entrance.
Richard. Richard, turn your microphone on, please.
You mentioned earlier that the, the entrance had been extended inward about 30 feet to accommodate how many vehicles so they wouldn't get on?
Approximately three.
Okay, the average length of an automobile in the United States is 14.7 feet. That's less than two.
I had them laid out. I have, we work with a turning template. I may be wrong. This may be longer than 30 feet. I, we actually ran a turning study with a passenger vehicle and we were able to have three. They came up to about here where you see the drive-through lane and they were off the concrete sidewalk.
I frequent the Dunkin' Donuts many times at the mobile station across the street and there is as many pickup trucks, four-door, full-size pickup trucks as there are vehicles like I drive, a typical vehicle.
I understand that, but because of the increase in the length of the drive-through lane, there's going to be a lot more vehicles in line. So, you know, we have 15 total that will get you, I believe, from here around to the windows. So we're looking at close to 20 vehicles, which is significant improvement from the Dunkin' across the street. And we can do a turning study too with pickup trucks. My husband drives one and he goes to Dunkin's all the time, so I know that there are more than just passenger vehicles in line. And we can show you exactly how many vehicles you can get into the drive-through lane without impacting the road.
Another question regarding traffic as it relates to the other four donut shops. Cumberland, Starbucks, Dunkin' Donuts at Mobile and Dunkin' Donuts across the street from the Starbucks area. Will the existing Mobile Dunkin' Donuts continue to exist?
No.
Okay.
The applicant's proposing to close, I believe, both the Dunkins, the one in Cobb's Corner and at the Mobile. Yeah, that's what they're looking into right now and have, you know, have this be the bait.
Has there been any traffic studies done considering?
We have the traffic study.
I'm sorry?
We have the traffic.
Oh, you do? Okay, I haven't seen that.
Our traffic engineer is online as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, go ahead.
Okay. Question I have is, I see the dumpster sites, you have a 10 by 10. Now, is that, I mean, what's the average width of a dumpster? I'm not sure. I mean, there's something like six feet. So, I mean, is it going to be just one dumpster for each?
Yes, one for each tenant.
So you, you're going to be commingling garbage as well as cardboard, so there'll be no recycling dumpster there?
What do you usually do? So the, the pad, I believe, is 10 by 10. Yeah, there, there is not a recycling dumpster that would just be trash.
I would recommend something for recycling, you know, increase the width of that so you could put recycling dumpster as well as a garbage dumpster.
Okay. We'll look into that.
Okay. And by the way, just for the record, I did drive by this here and anything you can put there has got to be a lot better than the other.
Agreed.
I mean, what's torn down, it was, it looks pretty bad when it come into the town of Stoughton, which brings me to my next question about welcoming into Stoughton and seeing that your attorney is the best at doing signs, welcome to Stoughton.
We already have one at the Seasons Corner Market.
Which is right here, adjacent.
Because I looked for it, I didn't see it, so it's obviously too low.
It's at, it's further down at the corner of Bay Road and Seasons.
Mr. Murphy, every single welcome to Stoughton sign seems to be too low.
I think Barry's connected to all those signs.
We are raising.
Barry and I can go out on a Saturday and get them all picked up.
From a logistics standpoint of view, just so I understand, if you're closing both the Dunkin' Donuts at Cobb's Corner and Mobile, has that traffic study taken into account the closure of those ones and bringing it all the way over to here now?
Yeah, our traffic engineer is online and that would probably be a better question for her. Kirsten?
This, just for the record, this is Kirsten Braun, traffic engineer with Chapel Engineering Associates, and we did perform the traffic site for the site. For the purpose of the study, we assumed that this is a totally new business to the area, so we accounted for traffic both from the Dunkin' Donuts as well as from the retail pad site. For the retail site, we assumed worst-case scenario development since we don't have a tenant yet for that, so we used a fast food restaurant without a drive-through there. But we, we didn't take any credit for the fact that the other two Dunkin' Donuts stores are going to close. We assume they'll be reoccupied by some sort of similar use, but for the purpose of the traffic impacts of this site specifically, we, we assume that this is a totally new business to the area, so we use standard traffic engineering practices, similar trip generation rates from similar land uses, and we applied those trip generation rates to the site.
Okay, so I heard what you said, but I think what I'm saying, what I'm hearing is you didn't take into account that the other two are closing. You just took that as an entire retail spot at its worst-case scenario, but my concern is Dunkin' Donuts is very much of a destination area, a destination restaurant. If you're taking away two Dunkin' Donuts in a, basically a two-square-block area and adding one, that's going to increase a fair amount of traffic into that one driveway. And that's the only reason I'm just asking the question.
Yeah, certainly. And, and we, we analyzed the driveway specifically. We understand that those two Dunkin' Donuts are going to, going to close and relocate to this site. And we took into account, you know, all the traffic that could be generated by this size Dunkin', specifically with the drive-through. Drive-throughs do, do create a bit more traffic. And we did look at all that and it appears that the site will, will operate, traffic-wise at least, at a satisfactory level. We don't expect massive, massive increases in traffic. A lot of, you know, coffee shop Dunkin' Donuts traffic is considered pass-by, which means that that traffic already exists on the adjacent road and somebody's going into the Dunkin' Donuts to grab a coffee on the way to work or grocery shopping or what have you. So I understand that there will be more traffic coming to this site rather than the two previous sites, so, so that will be realized at the site driveway, but we did take that into account in our traffic study.
Thank you. Any other questions on the board?
Yes? I have two questions. I don't know if this has been answered already or not, but I imagine with all your, you know, watching how many people show up at what times and stuff like that, what's your expectation of like an eight o'clock, how many cars would be lined up to, at an eight o'clock at a, you know, nine o'clock, you know, is it sufficient? And you must have these formulas somewhere, right?
Yeah, we did submit a, a traffic report in your packet, so you should all have a copy of that.
Yeah.
Kirsten, do you have a better response for that?
Yeah, so I, I guess this is a sort of a two, two-sided question, both pertaining to, to the drive-through lane as well, to make sure that that is adequate to accommodate the amount of traffic we anticipate. So we have performed studies at various other Dunkin' Donuts and Starbucks, other coffee shops, particularly. Particularly within this area. And what we've found is that we've noticed that there's an absolute maximum queue.
I can't fool around.
Within the drive-through lane. Within the drive-through lane, we've seen a maximum queue of approximately 13 vehicles. And I know we were cutting it close with the, the previous design iteration, but with this new design, it appears that we'll have enough seating space for 15 vehicles within the dedicated drive-through lane and then some additional space beyond that before spilling back out onto Sharon Street. So we do expect that the drive-through storage is adequate to accommodate, you know, those absolute maximum queue lengths that we've, we've observed at other sites. As part of our traffic study as well, on, on the flip side of how much traffic we can expect to be going to this location, specifically during one peak hour, particularly in the morning, is generally one of the, the highest peak hour periods. And it's one hour typically between 7:00 and 9:00 a.m. So based on our trip generation estimates, we do expect that after pass-by traffic, with pass-by traffic, we expect about 172 people in and out, so that includes both entering. includes both entering and exiting. So, 88 vehicles exiting and entering and 84 vehicles exiting, for example, during the weekday morning peak hour. But it's important to note that a large amount of this traffic is pass-by traffic. I believe it's up to, I think, 90% of trips are typically people just going, swinging in through for coffee on their way to somewhere else. So, that traffic already exists on the adjacent roadway. But that's just a quick summary of what I think the question was asking. I hope that covered it. I can answer anything else as well.
Really doesn't answer my question, but the three parking spaces that you have along the drive-through would essentially be sort of useless. I can't imagine somebody parking there and then having to back out.
You should look at the, that was one of the issues that.
That was one of the comments that we discussed. Originally, there was going to be employee parking, but I agree with you. So, that's been removed.
And from an urban design standpoint, moving the patio to the side of the street presents a much better street frontage than where they had the patio before.
Right.
Just provides more of an urban setting.
Yep. Good, good design. The retaining wall, what condition is it in? Who owns it? I see you're quite close to it at that point right there. Does it need repair? Is it, I mean, what's it?
It's a pre-cast concrete.
I think the microphone might still be muted.
Who's? Is it, can you hear me?
Whose microphone might be muted?
Yeah, we're not hearing any audio on this side.
Are you hearing audio from me?
We've got it now. Thank you.
Okay, Paul, speak loud.
Yes, the concrete wall that surrounds the property there, what condition is it in? Who owns it and who maintains it?
So, it's an existing pre-cast concrete retaining wall. It exists on these two parcels. So, it would be owned by the owner of the parcels, which is our applicant. They are, it appears to be in good condition. I do have pictures of it that I can provide to the board. We're proposing to put some, so again, we are very close to it in the plans that you have. This new design will pull this away. So, it will be about three feet away from the retaining wall. The intent is not to disturb the retaining wall, to touch it. We want to maintain it and use it for where it is. So, we kind of designed around that retaining wall.
Would you imagine planting vines against it or, you know, put some landscape against it?
We could. I mean, I just, in the area that you see here, we're just proposing a stone ground cover because of the small area between the pavement and the wall. It would be hard for something to grow within that little space. But we are proposing landscaping on either side and vines is something that we could definitely look into as well. You know, that might be a good option for this area where we have the stone.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Is there, on the second building there, tenant number two, who do you, do you have any idea who has an interest in moving in there?
Not at this time. So, what we did is we looked at this use and we thought it could potentially be another restaurant. It could be, you know, a service station. It could be a bank. So, the way we designed the site in front of you is a worst-case scenario. So, with respect to parking, the parking demand for a restaurant was the highest. So, that's what we designed here. If it becomes a use for a bank or an office or some other use where the parking demand's not as high, we may lose some more parking spaces, still be zoning compliant and increase the open space areas.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Any questions?
I'm on the phone and I have a question.
Go ahead.
Please identify your name and address.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Lauren Mahan and I am an owner at 2329 Central Street. My dad currently lives in the house and I live across the street. I noticed on the plan that you talk about on there, the six-foot stockade fence that's not currently there. It's in disarray. It's in shambles. And we have visited the building department in the past with the previous owners and asked that something be done with that because it's an eyesore from his backyard, but it's not his fence. And I wonder if that's something that's in your plans is to replace that stockade fence, which would help alleviate the view down that hill.
Thank you. I'm not sure exactly. Is it the fence between our site and the citizens?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, at the top of that wooded area.
At the, we're not proposing to do any changes in the actual wooded area. You know, the zone becomes residential where you see that, the red line on the plan.
Are you, Ma'am, are you talking about the top of the, on top of the wall that's there?
I'm talking about the, where the second building will be, not the Dunkin' Donuts.
Yep.
If you go up the hill, the wooded embankment, if you want to call it that, at the very top of that, there's a stockade fence that belongs to the property below. And that stockade fence is falling apart. It's falling down. And we had previously gone to the building department asking them to make the property owners do something about it and the property owners never did. So, I'm just wondering if that will get cleaned up now that we have a new building happening down there.
So, thank you. That explains where the fence is. So, this is the existing fence you was talking about. So, it is at the top of that wooded area. We were not proposing to do anything up in that area. Again, this is a commercial zone and that would be in the residential zone. So, I don't know how that would impact, you know, that work.
I guess what the question would be is that this is a.
Could remove it.
Right, right, exactly. If it's owned by this property owner, then just have them remove the fence if that's going to.
It does extend beyond our property line into the citizens' bank, but we could definitely remove it within our property limits.
Okay, okay. That would, that would make sense. Thank you very much. And I don't know if this is within the purview of this board or not because I was listening earlier. I just, as a statement, worry about having another empty lot in, or another empty building in Cobb's Corner because there are so many empty things there already. I worry about this retail space, retail building going in and who's going to inhabit it when nobody's moving into all of the other buildings that are there. So, that's just a concern that I have. No need to answer it.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the public that would like to speak? I'm assuming you guys will be asking for a continuance.
Correct. So, I guess, may I ask, Bill, so for a continuance, we would prepare a response to comments in a complete updated plan set going forward with the revised design that you see here tonight. For your review, is a week sufficient or do you need more?
We're going to, unfortunately, we're going to need more time due to different schedules and different things, unfortunately. I think one of the issues is, is the planning board comfortable with the revised design that the engineering and planning department have worked with the applicant on? We obviously feel it's.
It's a huge improvement.
It's a huge improvement. And so, unfortunately, the way the fourth Thursday in November is not an option unless Mr. Crimmens will be supplying the Thanksgiving dinner for everyone. We are only having, obviously, one meeting in November and the December 14th is the next hearing date. Unfortunately, that's just how it meets with the.
Would it be, if I may, would it be possible, since you only have the meeting on November 9th, is it possible to have a meeting on November 30th?
We already took a vote that we weren't going to do that.
No, I already have a, I already have a zoning, Campanelli rezone, public forum.
Okay.
Scheduled for that night.
Okay. I was just trying to cut down on the.
Yeah, we, due to, we'd already gone through logistically, Barry, where things were over the next two months. We came to a conclusion that one in November and one in December was all we were going to be able to do. And really, right now, the November 9th meeting is packed.
Right.
It's not, it's not.
So, December 14th is your next meeting and that's your only December meeting?
The only December meeting.
So, I think we'd be requesting an extension to December 14th.
But look on the positive side. It gives you and us time to have every I and T dotted and crossed.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
So, can I have a motion?
Motion to continue.
To accept their continuance, the request, the request of continuance.
To December 14th.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Just a question going forward, back later, when we get to January, you're going back to the second and fourth Thursdays as of January?
As of January, yes.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. On to general business. We get meeting minutes to review?
Yes, I emailed the Revival Chat number two.
I saw that.
There also, at the last sheet, I actually gave you a copy. Your name is on it.
Your name's on the first page. But due to seniority, you're at the bottom of the list.
Any motion on the meeting minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. All right, next item. Bill, I just wanted to ask where we are with the zoning articles we've submitted. Have you officially submitted anything for the Fall Town meeting?
For the Fall Town, yes. It's on, it's, we're item number 20 in the special town meeting.
For which zoning articles?
That would be the GB cleanup.
The three.
The three areas. And I will have on the agenda for the ninth under other business or at the end of the meeting, the rezoning that you, that we discussed, that you want to look at discussing it. That, so I'll have that on there. And I will let you know that I've run the numbers with this, the MBTA zoning. And good news and bad news. The good news is, well, one of the bad news initially was mixed-use was not allowed. So, mixed-use was not considered multifamily because it's restricted the first floor. So, that threw out using the core district. We, they have since changed that and they'll allow a certain ratio. Regardless of that, we've run the area and the numbers into this spreadsheet that the state provides and we comply with the units, with the flex and transition, and we do not need to include core. So, that's some good news. The one issue that we have, which I will look at proposing a zoning amendment, is under the state guidelines, you cannot restrict multifamily to number of bedrooms. Unfortunately, our code restricts it to a maximum of 10% for three bedrooms under multifamily in the regular area and it also in the Stoughton Center District. In order to comply, we literally need to just remove that within the core, within the flex and the transition district. We can leave that requirement in the rest of the town, but in the, in the flex and transition, we'll have to remove that. It is a, from a logistical standpoint, it is a very minor text amendment. I literally do the strikeout and we leave it. And that's, and so I will be, you know, showing you what that looks like.
That's going to have to get approved by town meeting.
That will have to get approved by town meeting, yes. So, I'm letting you know. And one of my arguments is, is how many apartment complexes with three-bedroom units have you seen approved or submitted in the last five years here?
Not, it was been, there's been applied for with some units.
Not applied, not even, the only, the only time in, where I've worked, you know, in my career over the last five years and in the last places I worked, the only time that three-bedroom units were private, were proposed is because they were accepting affordable housing money and they were required to put them in. But if you look at our last, you know, the last mixed-use project and you look at the, all of the apartment projects, you know, there's no three-bedroom. They don't even put in the 10%. So, I think it's a non-issue. I feel it is a non-issue. However, it's a major issue with the state. And we comply with the density requirement and the numbers easily.
Do you want three-bedroom units is what they want?
They want multifamily that is not restricted. It's not that they want three bedrooms. They don't want to, they don't want, the state says that you cannot restrict or dictate the number of bedrooms in multifamily.
So, who says you can't put in six?
So.
I mean, well, basically, what you're coming down to is you could actually put a rooming house in and then nobody could say anything.
Not really. I mean.
Well, no, I mean, that's.
So.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's really what the argument, the counterargument to that could be.
Yeah. They're not building, you know, they're not building, you know, six-bedroom apartments, you know?
No, no, no. But understand what I'm trying to say is that somebody, you know, in their thought process could go back and say, "I've got a building and I could put," you know, "any number, one kitchen, couple of bathrooms. I could put as many bedrooms as I want in that unit." Instead of subdividing it into, you know, two or three units, which you might get out of it, now we're going to do one. Now, obviously, they're going to go through site plan review. There's other, there's other stopgap to that.
There's other stopgap measures.
Right. What I'm trying to say is that it just, it doesn't make a lot of sense is what I guess I'm trying to say.
So, you know what? It is the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So.
It's open-ended, so they can decide what they want to do, however they want to do, when they want to do.
So, so.
Yeah, because like you said, you could have a common kitchen, a common bathroom and fill the place with.
No, if you have a common kitchen, common bathroom and you, and we look at it and it's under the rooming house, that's not allowed. So, I believe there's a lot of, I believe there's a lot of checks and balances through our site plan review and through the review. I think you are making, you are projecting a hypothetical situation that is, you know, is so far-fetched, you know, that, I'm just, you and I can agree to disagree. But I'm letting you know that it's, you, the state does not, that's, so when I go through the formula, it says, you know, on this spreadsheet, and you can come in, anyone can come in, you click, you know, "Are bedrooms restricted?" Well, I hit yes and then. Well, I hit yes, and then it pops up, and goes, and it says, you need to modify your zoning. I mean, that's exactly what it says. So what I did is I went, no, 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 I went through the entire spreadsheet as if that didn't exist, to run the number. I want the number, the 1,600 or whatever, the 1,200 units. We can meet the number with our, with existing, we did a great job, I want to tell you, the Stoughton Center District, we did, we exceed what the Commonwealth of Massachusetts wants with the density.
In our existing.
In our existing. The one thing that we don't, the one issue, one line out of all of this is the 10% three-bedroom. That is the only, that is the only issue. Everything else, we actually, we did a great job. You, I'm, we didn't, I didn't, I inherited, you know, you guys did a phenomenal job, and the study committee with the Stoughton Center District, because guess what? It was started before this MBTA 3A stuff, and, you know, and guess what? I didn't even run the numbers on the core. We're not even, we don't even need the core. If you do the core, we're even, even more.
I actually had hair when we started that.
Huh?
I actually had hair when we started.
Yeah, well, you have more than me. So I'm just letting you, the two zonings that I see, the two zonings, so I believe that, I will put them on the agenda because it will be good to have them in November, so I can, and I'll have them drafted, and say, yes, this is what we want to submit. We submit it, then I will schedule the first hearing, I'll look at scheduling, the way the schedule works, I'll schedule the, it depends, I can schedule it for the December 14th, which is, you know, we need to be no more than six months out from the May Town Meeting, so I gotta, I need to know when, you know, I'll have to figure out when the May Town Meeting is. But worst case is, I schedule it for the first meeting in January, if you, if you need to continue it, you continue it to the second meeting in January. You have to approve whatever, make a recommendation on the zoning by the second meeting in January, because the selectman vote on the warrant, that first selectman's, select board meeting in February. So it's logistic, I can work, it's like, we could do December, and then have the two January meetings, or do January, the two January meetings, you gotta, you have to know, you have to conclude that on the second January meeting, in order to then send it to the select board, for them to finalize the warrant. So, and I'm really worried about the, that six months, the December 14th, really.
We'll just do, we'll just do a first meeting in January.
Okay.
All right, just do it then.
Okay.
Can I have a motion to close me?
So, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.